That was a little longer than two minutes for a couple of hours. At least, uh, the weather out there is terrible. It's raining. Um, we're, we're in good company. Ms. Train, you there?
I'm here.
We're going to start the regular meeting of the Mars Council for March eighth, two thousand twenty-two. If you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of our Northern Silence. If you remember in the prayer that Octavius Pope had some members of her family that had passed away recently, something pretty tragic. We would certainly appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have before you minutes for the February twenty-second regular work session? Have discussions in the work session as well? Do I hear motion to approve?
No.
Do I hear second? Motion probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Quarr?
Aye.
Ms. Train?
Aye.
Motion, case, and action. Presentations, Chief Lopez of the Marrow Police Department.
All right, I think it's gonna do one first. I have a warning, so he's having fun inside. I was gonna call this one spring clean, uh, but then the temperature dropped to thirty-one degrees. Uh, we have a proposal surplus, some excess vehicles. Uh, this will not reduce us out of our functional fleet. These cars don't run. Uh, one of them sixteen years old, uh, so I'll go through your mind while I look at you. Uh, vehicle twenty-one is a twenty-nineteen Ford F-50. That was totaled in a car crash. It was hit by a drunk driver. Uh, his insurance has already reimbursed it, uh, in just a moment. Uh, proposal purchase, the replacement for it. Uh, that one has already been all the way back in insurance.
And how do we dispatch or, uh, just?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you did say.
Uh, car seventy-eight is a two thousand nine Ford Crown Victoria. It does not run. Seventy-nine is a twenty-ten. That's shorter than the cost of repairs. Car exceeds the value of the car. Uh, two thousand six Ford Crown Victoria does not run. Uh, vehicle ninety was damaged in a crash. We will not fall for it. Uh, the car payout, the insurance billed it, they gave five thousand dollars for it. Uh, it's not enough to repair a car. Uh, so we'd like to surplus that car as well. And, uh, vehicle ninety-nine is a twenty-thirteen Ford, except for sedan. It was in a crash. Uh, that crash was our fault. And the, uh, uh, costs of repairs exceed the, 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 uh, so it just doesn't make any sense to repair. But that car has a new engine. Uh, you can take the engine out of that car and put it in one of our district fleet cars and say that it's really almost new again now. Uh, so our recommendation to remove those and list them for, uh, in terms of going to the road council.
All right, so that's item number three. Questions? Ms. Knight?
Uh, no questions.
And Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Mr. Quarr?
No questions.
Ms. Train?
No questions.
I have one. You still have vehicles to drive, huh?
Yes. Uh, we don't work in all that. I, uh, I hear you got an employee who works, but I get afraid of that. Sorry, you said. Uh, we actually have a, uh, one armed police department who can include any vehicles on that.
Per recommendation from the police department, item number three. Do I hear a motion to approve? No. Do I hear a second? Motion probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Quarr?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Train?
Aye.
I think we got item four too, though.
Yes, sir. Uh, so as I mentioned, uh, vehicle twenty-one was a twenty-nineteen Ford F-50 pickup truck. Uh, was totaled when it was hit by a drunk driver. Uh, their insurance has already paid almost the full base value of the car, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Excuse me, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, thirty-two cents, uh, which was a, a good return to the value of the car. However, insurance is not reimbursed for the value of the emergency, but it must add to the car, make it a functional police car. Uh, that total cost that we expect is gonna be about eleven thousand dollars, seven, eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, fourteen cents. Uh, as we purchase all of our other police cars this year, we come in under budget on every car. So as a result, we have that money still in that line. I'm gonna be a bit budget for this year twenty-two, uh, and make that purchase about leverage. Uh, we are also petitioning the cases in the private, like Sandy Sperry, municipal court. We'd ask to be heard on restitution, uh, to see if we can get a court to order the drunk driver to pay us that money back. Other than that, it's a very important point.
So, questions? Ms. Dean?
Um, will you be questioned? Same, Dr. Heaton?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is gonna be a twenty-twenty-one Ford F-50. Um, Allen Disney does not have this one stock. They refer us to, uh, contact at Brandon. Uh, same price Allen will have done. They, they honored it since they didn't have one. Uh, so it's on the way. And we'll use that to haul the special inventory, the total of signs.
So, Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Mr. Quarr? Ms. Train?
No questions.
Do I hear a motion to approve item number four? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Quarr?
Aye.
And Ms. Train?
I'll let the chief do the question.
Not, not the phone part.
Chief, not the phone part. So this is really exciting to me because I, I tend to be more of a nerd in that particular respect, that things are, uh, paperwork and words tend to become exciting to me whenever we're having achievement in that particular respect. Because everything, you know, you tend to expect that, you know, police is all exciting, even the cases, and this, and that, and guns, and different things, but there's also a very screwiness and administrative part to the, to the job and what we do, um, in relation to our internal policies, in relation to the guidelines and standards that, that guide our, our actions legally in that entire, you know, spectrum, which is criminal law and public safety. And so every three years, departments that choose to do this, uh, enter its program through the, uh, through the Association of these police, um, that gets the agency's credit. Now, you know, what does that mean? Basically, to put it into, into terms that everybody can kind of relate to all of us, um, it's as if you had a rulebook at your house that allows the things that you can and can't do. And those standards that come along with, that guide those actions that you take. Um, and you have somebody come in and have, and make you prove that you've been actually following these things through different meetings, you know? Uh, did you write a ticket according to what the standards are? Did you copy that and work right? Is your evidence and property in the vaults that they did try to deceive us or, or, you know, the, uh, recover on? Is that in compliance? Uh, things, use of force is really the biggest one. That's probably the one that we can all probably relate to more is those standards, following state standards for that. And so, um, we just had a lot of assessment back in September that kind of gets you ready for somebody coming in and getting you a book and making sure you're doing it correctly. Um, and we were re-certified because the law police department had been previously certified. Um, and for me, that's one of the really big elephant in the room, um, achievements, or at least, uh, I don't wanna say obstacles, but one of the big things, one of the big feathers, uh, was sitting out there when I took over in, in, in January, in June. And I'm happy to say that on February third, we were, um, we were re-certified, uh, for three years' worth of meeting those particular standards. And yours is a G C police case letter, um, basically congratulating us. I'm super excited about it. I know it's really a dry subject, and it turns to be a pretty dry subject, but I'm trying to make it as funny and as interactive as possible as I can. Because it really doesn't mean a lot to a lot of people. Like, okay, cool, you know, you have to pay for a sign that writes the end of these standards. So it is a really good deal because, and I will read this, because it really, really encapsulates how, what a big achievement this is for the police department. Achieving and maintaining the high standards makes your agency more professional and provides the basis for your agency to represent as a role model through the award of state certification. This achievement is a combination that your agency practices are consistent with progressive professional standards. And the, uh, and the most telling part of all of this, which is the end of the letter, says you're continuing to evolve within state certification programs. Good for your agency, good for your constituency, and good for law enforcement in general. Um, David. It's very, very good, um, for us. Um, for me personally, it's something that I want to deliver on, and I want to publicly, uh, single out, sorry, Adam Smith.
Absolutely.
And also Major Barry Pedro. Because in the middle of what has been a whirlwind seven, eight months at this point, David, they were, they, they, they kept it down in that sector. It would count no fires in that area. And I really, really, really appreciate, I always had to take a bunch of time to go home and grab, but I really, really appreciate what you guys have done in that particular portion of it. It's a lot. David and I collectively, independently, dealing with whatever things we're doing for us to be able to concentrate on those things, um, where we guys had that. And it, I know it's not really, it's not the sexiest part of the, our, our job, but it's definitely one of the most, uh, liability-ridden ones that we have. We cover down, um, tremendously well. So, uh, March twenty-second for the next meeting, uh, the JCP will be coming out and doing something a little bit more pompous circumstantial, representing us with, uh, the actual pucks. Um, and explaining to council and members of, of the city what a big accomplishment this is. Hopefully it'll do as good a job as I did, but probably not, uh, but I will be here for that. So, uh, round of applause. And it's a thank you, very much, guys.
Thank you. Community engagement group?
We have.
All right, my solid everybody. Good evening. For those of you who don't know, you know, Sergeant Rodriguez is now with the Community Engagement Division. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you all today and share my vision for community engagement for this year. So I got here last year in July, and my first event that I planned was National Night Out. So bear with me a little bit, because that event's gonna be out of order, but I'll go over the dates as I go over each one that I'll be touching on. So last year, the first event I planned was National Night Out, and that was held in August, which is something that's national across the United States. And it's a night of law enforcement community where they come together in a positive affect to enjoy the night of fun. And we'll be doing that again this year in August. As a Clayton State University alumni, I built a partnership with the university last year, and that has carried over to this year. And last, last month, I'm sorry, we were able to partner with them for the homecoming events that they had with the water tower reveal, the homecoming parade, and the tailgate, which were all a great success. Last year in October, I conducted the Domestic Violence Awareness and Defensive Tactics Program, which Miss Renee Knight attended. And the picture in the slide was from the event last year, and we plan on doing that again this year. I also plan on doing a sexual assault awareness and prevention program, hopefully next month in the month of April. And also a campus use of force symposium, and I'll explain a little bit more to that in just a moment. For the community, we plan on doing a citizens' police academy and also a use of force symposium. Last year, we joined with the Exotic Car Club in the City of Marrow to do a Thanksgiving event at the Hoby Davidson for a turkey giveaway. And I plan to do something similar to that this year as well in November. In December for Christmas, we did shop with The Badge. We partnered with Sam's and Walmart and our elementary school to be able to sponsor ten students for Christmas. They were able to receive an allotment and, uh, select courses of their choice. Walmart donated a brand of life for each child, and Sam's also donated pizza and drinks for the party that we provided for the children and their families. And above this is a picture from that event from last year, and we plan on doing that this year as well. To explain the use of force symposium, to kind of piggyback off the liability issue that Chief Lopez just discussed, it'll be to answer any questions regarding laws, policy, and training that law enforcement does. And it'll also give citizens the opportunity, once we obtain the simulator, for them to be able to understand what it's like to make quick, sensitive decisions, just like law enforcement does. This year, I'll be partnering with Centerwell. Last year, they conducted the Grand Open, which we all attended. They are a senior-based medical facility, and we will be doing a health, a health fair for the city in May. Stand with Simon. That's an organization that was founded back in two thousand and ten by a group of students in Oklahoma. Once Ty, which is the child that's pictured, committed suicide. He had been bullied for two years. Once he stood up for himself, he was suspended from school, and during his suspension, he took his life. So today, his parents drop him out of state, um, discussing suicide prevention and bullying. And I'm hoping to partner with the Clayton County Schools to not only bring this tomorrow, but also bring it to Clayton County. NYPC Foster Care. That's the National Youth Placement Court. They work hand in hand with law enforcement, D-facts, and the juvenile justice system. They provide placement for children ages five to nineteen, and they also educate families who want to become foster families. I'm partnering with them to do a pit wall game for foster families and also a back-to-school drive. Walking in Faith Authority Team Council. They target teens ages thirteen to nineteen and educate them on giving back to the community and how to become tomorrow's leaders. I'm still in the process of working with them as to what it is that we're gonna be doing, but we will be doing a community event together. And Connects One Veteran Women. They're an organization that assists homeless women, but more so specifically women that are veterans that are homeless. And I hope to partner with them to do a community event as well. And last but not least, I'll continue to support the city hall events, like Grand Openings, Hippie Fest, St. Halloween, Day of the Dead, the car shows, which are super fun. Mayor, you had a great time with that one. And Juneteenth and all other events that come about. Thank you, Mayor. Health fair with Centerwell. I'm meeting with them, not next week, but the week after, to select an actual date, but it won't be in May. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I appreciate the plan. Uh, that is something that we have been really wanting, the community engagement, uh, unit in the police department to kind of step up and take the reins in from it. So I'm very excited with the information that you put together. I'm certainly here to assist. Um, I did get your email earlier today about connecting with the school system. Um, and also Walking in Authority. I did speak with Sparkle Adams last week, and so we can get together because there's some things that she shared with me. Me not realizing that she's gotten in contact with you, so let's, you know, continue to connect the dots because what you're doing is, uh, gonna be, is really important. It's really important for the, the police department, the face of the police department, to be very engaging with everyday life issues of, of our residents. And so, you know, we need to build that trust. So I appreciate the plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Great job.
Thank you. Ms. Train?
Well, Renee can ease and he, uh, is initially the community engagement. You imagine we have a group that can not take long, um, having the community engagement. Thank you all for all you do.
Thank you.
Good job. Um, we, we know our citizens out there appreciate it. We, we know there's, uh, a lot more going on behind the scenes than, than people who mentioned, uh, the private program schedule cannot. One of our fathers' day might have to be slid over just a touch. Um, you know, but that's in conjunction, you know, with a full slate of, of the event schedules, not including all the private sector events. And you can now pretty much hang out in the City of Marrow, and you should have some really nice choices. Um, you know, next week, we'll have more come in and talk about the event you just held over at the, uh, conference site, which went very well. Um, so, great job.
Thank you.
Approve and consider and acceptance of donation of six parcels approved of the file earlier. And to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and other related. And those are Ford, Property and Land Drive, Duffy Drive, Duffy Drive, Marlboro Road, Marlboro Road, Tobes Drive, and this people. And it's from the Clayton County Land Bank, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and other related documents. Have discussions about that. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Do I hear a second? Motion probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Quarr?
Aye.
Ms. Train? Item two, had some great discussion about that. Um, approval of the city manager's recommendation for Gordian to provide upgrades for the greenhouse in the amount of eight and a half thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars per cent. And the other, the mayor actually did agree with and other related documents. Discussion.
Yes, I have a question before the, uh, we press the front of the region. Uh, what is the legal name of Gordian? I don't see anything, um, package presented, council that has any information beside the logo of Gordian working.
Can you check the email that just sent you? You'll see the address as well.
Thank you. And could you also kind of understand what is the connection between Gordian and the, um, contract?
I'm sorry?
Could you help us understand what is the connection relationship between Gordian and the prime contractor?
Gordian is an umbrella organization.
The package presented to us has a Gordian logo that is also stated as part of the prime's contract.
Correct. Uh, Gordian is an umbrella organization that follows the, the contracts and the, and the law regarding how they, how they present the contracts to state board and various other state union. And that is one of the subcontractors' worksmen under the umbrella of Gordian. Obviously, due by state.
Other comments? And, uh, do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Quarr?
The, 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 the package provided to the town office for our block, uh, to this, I have not informed the, uh, community in the city.
I'm gonna go to affirm, and we know this project forward, motion carries. Item three has been solved. Item four has been solved. Item five, we'll take them all apart separately. I realize that two of these basically are concurrent, but we'll handle it that way.
Item five actually is inclusive of item six, so there's no need to consider that contract. Because it is inclusive and source of any contract that comes with it.
For, because we have it written there, I'm gonna go ahead and, and ask for, because we had discussion, uh, to approve item five and item six collectively, which is referenced by a single contract, uh, and that one is related to the hotel motel tax. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Quarr?
The, uh, I appreciate you and I for coming tonight for presentations and, uh, I'm not really able to support a moment that I don't, I'm not able to see the contract.
Motion case. Item number seven, to engage the services of Georgia Municipal Association in this particular case related to the alcoholic beverage tax and compliance, and authorize the mayor to execute contract and any other related documents. We've had discussion and presentation. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Do I hear a second? Motion probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Quarr?
The, I'm not able to support a moment that the contract is, I'm not, I have not seen the contract.
Motion case. Item number four, related to the fire chief, I believe. So this would be the first reading of an ordinance, uh, twenty-twenty-two, fire code. So this is a, uh, first reading of the ordinance for the changes to the fire department representative's work session, I think, three meetings ago. And what it says, it brings us up to the state union standards, the current union standards, which incorporates all the national codes that are current as well. It also has coverage in there that prevents us from having to change this in the future. It says that you're obviously right to store the, uh, whatever comes about. And it's the first reading. I will entertain questions because we didn't have a chance to look at the work session. Um, questions from the council? Ms. Knight?
I don't have any questions. I'll call with, uh, Ms. Dean.
Just company.
Mr. Quarr? Ms. Train?
Um, uh, this, I have a competitor, which is one time that doesn't allow me to reach school, so therefore at this moment, I'm not able to make any kind of a question.
And we follow what we had a discussion in order. Um, pretty much, that covers our original package. Um, Congress will be out.
Oh, let me get up and say thank you to the police department. You do a whole job, and you forgot Lunar New Year. Y'all were all over the place. And so we thank you for all that you do. And, uh, what was, what was the last dance that we went to?
Evolution.
Evolution? Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And we got good pictures. Ms. Knight?
May I come up?
Thank you. It's a, Mayor, Council, thank you. Uh, this is taking, taking a little bit of time. This is a congressional forward information. Um, my twenty years of living in the city and going to the citizens' basic academy and serving as the first member of the state certified in, in the state of Georgia. And in the last five years, working with our police department, fire department, um, I know what Morris finest is. And this was conveyed to me on January seventeenth, I fell in my neighbor's house, and then it faced first on the driveway, causing a large gash in my right, above my right eye. Luckily, I had my phone down on my one. Uh, of course, then I doubt my wife was down the street. Um, but the next text I got was from Chief Lamb. Immediately saying, Randy, you're on your way. Makes you feel pretty good. Also wanna thank Chief Lopez, Chief Lamb, is it Lamb?
Lopez.
Okay. He was the first one there to assist myself and my wife. Wanna thank them. And then I wanna thank, uh, Captain Rollins and his team for showing up. Um, I'm reading some names that I gave, uh, Paramedic Carried Oil, EMT Carmen Ward, Captain Matt Rollins, firefighter EMT Xavier Lockett, firefighter EMT DeMarco Ponder, who came to my assistance. And also for Perry and Carmen for staying with me as I sat in Fremont Emergency Department until I was checked in with the emergency department there, and they left me in good hands. So I just wanna publicly thank Morris finest, uh, for helping me, not only in the year, but when I had a natural accident. I wanna congratulate him, so. The center real quick thing I wanna bring up real quick is, um, we, we have a lot of seniors in that, in the City Hall. And I'm noticing that our sister city, Jonesboro, is doing a lot of things for senior housing. And, um, and I would, I would like the council and, and the mayor to look at our city and see what we can do to also assist the seniors in this city. We, I'm not saying build a housing community or whatever, but maybe a center, we're gonna do something similar. I know there's a charter, public, very well placed and all that stuff. Something local, uh, that we can also get in the news, like they did Clayton, they, they do. Uh, I like to see our name in there more often. So I just wanna bring that to those teams and see what we can look into. Thank you.
Other question?
I promise to be brief.
You don't have to.
No, you won't. Guys, you gotta be really excited about what's gonna happen in this city, man. I mean, if you just think where we've come from and how the nine-album seat arena and this partnership with Clayton State, and now Marty's coming to South Lake, if you haven't heard. You gotta be really excited about it. And we gotta become a city that's easy to do business with. We gotta have a good reputation. I'm, I'm, I embrace the, the, the agreement that was voted on. I'm, I'm, I embrace the, the, the agreement that was voted on with M., with Jimma tonight. We need some oversight somewhere, because if we haven't been getting the amount of money from hotel motel tax in the past, that we should have been getting, because no one's checking the books of the hotel, now is the time. And if I'm not mistaken, the gentleman said, we can go back three years and recoup those funds. That's important to us. What concerns me is this, is some of the comments that come out about transparency. We have to be transparent. We transparent. We can't wait until we get into public view and air our dirty language sometime. Now, I know politics is a dirty business. Politics is politics, but all it takes is a phone call, or a text message, or a meeting over coffee to discuss concerns and issues, and maybe we don't have to air them out publicly sometimes, because sometimes, Mayor and Council paints a bad picture to the citizens that's sitting out here. But that's all I ask, if we could communicate a little bit better and be enthused about what's coming here, 'cause, uh, it's like I told you, change is coming. You're gonna either get on this train, or you're gonna get left behind. Go down to your local automobile, uh, uh, automobile dealership, have them check your, your airbags and your seat belts, because you're gonna ride through that business corridor one day, and it's gonna blow you away, and you might be involved in a car accident, and Morris Finest might have to come and get you. Change is coming.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if there's something wrong with the website, or if it's a user error. Um, I'm only seeing one set of minutes, starting from September through the current, um, one, one per month, instead of for the two meetings. So, I, like I said, I don't know if this is user error, or if there's a problem with the website.
We know we're revamping the website, because it's not super functional for a lot of different reasons. But we'll have somebody look at that particular section, I don't know. I doubt it's user error, I think it's pretty simple.
Could be.
But we, we, we're aware that everything's not functional the way it's supposed to. It's a little dated, and it's...
Okay.
On that pile of things to accomplish.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody that's really responsible for that.
The comments. Comments from the council. Ms. Knight? Mr. Collins, I appreciate that comment, but I'm, I'm just gonna piggyback on, on that. Serving on the council is an honor to represent the citizens, and it is part of our job to work together, um, to make sure that we move the city forward. Um, I just ask again, as, as I have in the past, um, information is slow the way that it needs to, conversations, uh, pick back up the way that they need to, uh, so that we can function as one body for the purpose of moving the city forward. That's the whole goal, that's the purpose, that's why we're here. These individual and personal agendas that seem to take flight, um, at what point in time do you have time to do city business? Let's focus on city business, moving the city forward, making sure that we capture the moment that we've been waiting for so long. There's a partnership over there by Clayton State for development, the city's partnership with Clayton State, um, you know, the arena at, at South Lake, there are so many things, the opportunities for further development around the Loop Road, around South Lake Mall. Uh, we have a lot of business to tend to. Let's focus on business.
Ms. Trent? Ms. Trent?
I don't have a...
Mr. Quaun?
Let me, uh, Collins said, uh, I'm happy to see a lot of things moving in the city, a good thing, and we here, we are here to support, to have the growth of the city, but, uh, transparency is a big word for, for, for the city. I mean, we need to communicate, not whenever we want to, but we all deserve, we share the same information. Not a maybe, whenever the mayor feel like, like the last meeting we saw, wasn't happy about that. Information will be required in, by, by, um, city council, to the city manager. I wish that, um, information be asked, request, provided. First, we talked about sanitation. City manager told me that you're gonna provide the, the labor, gonna be needed to provide a hybrid option for sanitation. Therefore, for us to determine the, uh, the residential, um, sanitation rate, that would be happening. Those things I got. And, um, councilwoman Trent, she getting called, city manager, thank you, Tim. I don't know. Have you been called up a lot?
Look, your class, please, sir.
Okay. But, I mean, she, she, they called, man, I, I have to call city manager with my name. They called her after two weeks, everything was reported to the members of the council. Those are little things, but, uh, I hope that we all can be treated the same.
Um, yes, um, briefly, um, they'll, I think we voted on procedure, uh, for council to address certain issues. Um, if we have issues, we ask the city manager to, you submit it to the city manager, to the city manager, share that information with all of, the, all of the council.
Ask in front of the council, in a meeting, a public meeting.
So that all of the council will know whatever council member is requesting. So, uh, my very important position here, why the council needs to have the truth.
We've got a point.
Yeah, you've got a point. So, thank you for that, and, um, also, Mr. Collins, Mr. May, um, thank you for your time, you know, you always slur us on, um, fire department, police department, you don't know you're, you're, okay, so, we love you. As always. And, um, I'd just like to say also to those that are not here, um, that do the city events, um, they, they have a job, and they have performed outstanding, and I just wanted to say, uh, to them and, uh, the team that put the events together, that we appreciate all their efforts, and to the police department, fire department, they're there as well, we appreciate their efforts. I had fun with it.
Yeah, hell, it's interesting.
I'd like our new public works director to stand and just recognize yourself.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Brandon Hermsmeyer. I'm from, uh, Griffin, Georgia. Been around here my entire life. Really excited to take this position as the public works director, to see how we can move things forward for the City of Morro.
Excellent. Go see him.
You have my, my number in my...
Dorothy, I got it.
You mean Drew Baker.
All right, I'll have a last question. On a more serious note, um, you know, former employee, Captain Neil has passed. Did you give us full information as to his family?
Sure.
Uh, you did know?
Captain Neil was a longtime member of the Mar, Fire Department, went to security earlier, uh, he ended up as captain and fire marshal, retired in two thousand and six, passed away one day last week. People was this Friday, he's Ford Stewart, in Jonesboro, visitation at ten, people on Riverland. Family has asked the fire department to provide all, all errors, which we're doing, with some retired and some active members, uh, who also have some other respects of their office.
Any questions? Do I have anything related to that?
What was the name we can, I'm sorry?
Black Neil.
Black Neil, Black Old Pops.
He's been retired since like two thousand and six.
I'm too, I'm too young.
We're too old to remember.
So, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll go right back into the work session, because I think we got a couple items right there.